It's 7:31 and it's time for us to say our little pledge. So should we get started, everyone?
Yep.
Let's even stand and do our patriotic duty. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic of America.
All right, so going forward, we're going to designate a pledger because I think the chorus is quite funny. So we're going to go in some alphabetical order next time and do pledges in order. So, good evening, welcome to the September meeting of the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board. We've, I guess we should do a roll call. Kelly, would you do the honors, please?
Sure. Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Tomlin.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Heidi, you're on mute. You're on mute, Heidi.
That's it. And Neil Zuckerman.
Here. I think, Heidi, I think you may be muted on your phone as well. So the double mute, we call that in my office. Okay, great. Welcome aboard. Glad to see everyone. We have a, not a completely full agenda thankfully, and I hope we will finish within our two-hour timeframe. That will be my pledge to you to do that tonight. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, any amendments, any corrections? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, any abstentions? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business of Hyman Fleming. I am going to recuse myself because I have some personal business with Mr. Hyman related to a building I own in the Garrison train station. So my, our first vice chair, Kim Connor, will do the, will do the proceedings and I'll take back over for the CRS warehouse. So, Kim, the virtual gavel is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so. Been a while since I've done this, and now I'm finding myself out of loss. So, Ron, do you want to tell us about this?
Actually, I'd suggest that you give the applicant representative an opportunity to present.
That's right. Sorry.
They probably share a screen on the proposal.
When there's nobody standing in front of you, you forget who you're supposed to go to first.
Yeah, hi, this is Roland Hyman.
So, Mr. Hyman, would you like to introduce your project to us?
Yes, so I bought a piece of property off of Angels Hill Road, which is just off of Route 9, kind of between Snake Hill Road and 403, up on top of the hill. And I want to build a house for myself. I'm a builder in the area, so that's why Neil knows me. I think I know some other people on the board as well. And so I want to build a private residence for myself and move here. But I bought the property and I closed on it in May. And now I'm working on a home design with Susan Rodriguez, who is also an architect and building a home in the area, and working with Beadie and Watson to do the, to prepare the site plan. So I've worked with them and we submitted that here to the board meeting today.
Okay. Thank you. Ron?
Okay, the board has a technical memorandum from my office on the application. It's a house that really falls below the 3,000 square foot threshold that is normally required for it to require a planning board action. However, the site does contain a town designated, designated ridge line, and that requires him to get site plan approval from the board. Relative to the construction proposed within the site, there's also going to be disturbances of slopes greater than 20%. So that will eventually require a referral to the conservation board purely for comment. No permit is required. Initially, at the first meeting, when you hear a proposal, you first classify the project. This, this being a residential project should be classified as a minor project, which defines the review and approval process and move the application through the board. In my technical review, I also identified that there was one bit of information lacking, a letter from the CEO, but that has since been filed, so that now is in your records. Relative to the seeker without a special permit required, I believe the project is classified as a type 2 action, since it's a residential construction project. That's, that's an issue that you can address the end if you wish. And then since it lies along Route 9, it will require referral to Putnam County Planning Department. The last matter that you typically consider early in the process is whether you wish to conduct a site inspection just to evaluate a potential environmental impacts.
So. So, there was, I am looking at the technical memo that came from Beadie and Watson. And. So I guess we'll talk about the disturb, the amount of disturbance determines whether, whether or not it's going to need a special permit.
That's right. The original filing that you, you got, the meeting, this project was actually on the August meeting.
Right.
Submittal perform for that, for that meeting. That project plan identified a variety of disturbances that warranted a special permit because there were disturbances beyond that necessary for just the driveway, which is permitted in slopes greater than 20%. The applicant consultant went back to further evaluate his slope analysis. And your code does have some exclusions for very small areas of steep slopes. The drawing was modified in accordance with that criteria. And so the disturbances in the vicinity of the proposed structures was eliminated from the latest plan, and that's why a resubmittal was made. So there's no special permit now required based on what their revised slope analysis indicates. However, it still requires a referral to the planning board, to the conservation board.
Okay. So I guess the first thing for us to do here is to classify it as a minor project?
Correct.
Okay, so, anyone, I'd like, if anyone would like to entertain a motion, to present a motion to classify it as a minor project?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, okay. Um, so automatically is it, is it type 2 action? Or a type 2?
Yeah, for the residential project, it's a vision, yes.
So we don't have to designate it. We should classify it.
It's type 2.
Okay, so, someone would like to make a motion to classify it as a type 2?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Next, we would have to make a referral to Putnam County Planning. So if anyone would like to make a motion to that effect?
I might wish to also include the conservation board in those referrals.
Do we do them simultaneously?
If you wish.
Okay, so a referral to Putnam County Planning and the conservation board?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, do we want to, I assume we would also, we typically make a referral to the Garrison Fire Department?
Just going to say, you may want to make a courtesy referral to the fire department on this one.
Yeah. So if anyone would like to make a motion to refer to the fire department, the Garrison Fire Department?
I'll make that.
I'll make that.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then the next thing to do would be to, I think, we typically do a site walk. I don't personally see any reason why we wouldn't want to schedule a site walk for this particular project. Do we pick a date first, or do we make a motion to have a site walk first?
Usually you guys make a motion for the site walk and then you decide upon a mutually agreeable date.
All right, so, like to entertain a motion to have a site walk?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so let's pick a date.
You want to do in October?
What, when's, what's the date of our next meeting?
The 15th, October 15th.
So.
The 12th would be Columbus Day, so do you want to do it the Sunday before Columbus Day, which is on the Monday, or do you want to do the 4th, the Sunday before?
I'm looking at the September calendar. So it's Columbus Day weekend on the 11th. So it's the 4th, or yeah, the 4th. Is the 4th good for everybody?
That should be good.
Okay, so. I mean, to make a motion for the date, I'm sorry, I just, it's this Zoom thing.
We usually just reach a mutually agreeable date and say that'll be the date. I mean, if there was some contention, you might want a motion, but as it is, I don't think you'd stand on formality.
All right, thank you, Steve. So then we'll have our site walk on Sunday, October 4th, 9:30 a.m. For this project. And is there anything else we need to discuss?
Would you consider a public hearing or waiving the public hearing?
Yeah, let me just speak to that for a second. When the, based on the original plan, the disturbance is planned around the house or expected around the house. A special permit was required and that drove the need for a public hearing. Now with that special permit no longer being required, based on the revised plan, the, the public hearing is discretionary. So the board has a choice as to whether to schedule one or not.
Well, I think that probably it would be better to do the sidewalk and then decide whether or not we need a public hearing, rather than make that decision now, since we have public hearings kind of backed up anyway.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else feels differently.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good to me.
So we'll talk about it in October. Okay, so I think that's it for this project, so I'm going to pass the gavel back to Mr. Zuckerman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Kim, you proved the merit behind the elevation to first vice chair. Brilliant job. Thank you very much. All right, now we, now we will go to the part three of the CRS public hearing. We kept it open because this board had a number of questions of the applicant and there were a number of public comments. Kelly, I don't see the need to reread all the items unless Steve Gabba feels the need to re, thank you, thankfully. We will not reread that then. So Kelly, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak at this point?
Let's see, John Canning. Let's promote him. John, are you there? Mr. Canning?
Mr. Canning? Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Canning. I appeared before you a month ago. It's good to be before you again and see that everybody as well. I prepared a traffic report for the CRS application that provided information on the suitability of US Route 9 to accommodate the type of vehicles that would be accessing the facility. And at that time, I answered a number of questions that you had, and there were a number of additional questions that, that you had and some of the public had. So between then and now, we did some additional efforts and we, unfortunately, because of the shortness of time between the last public hearing and the submission date, we didn't get to complete it before the submission date, but we did provide it recently to your consultant. We did a number of additional studies. Basically, one of the questions was, did the data we collected previously for speed, was it out of the ordinary? So we redid the speed study. We put the road tubes out on the road in the same location again, and the data came back almost identical. It was the same 50, 49 miles per hour, 85th percentile speed in the northbound direction coming up the hill, and it actually increased from 52 miles per hour to 54 miles per hour in the southbound direction. So it's obviously a little higher, but I wouldn't say that it's significantly higher or out of the ordinary. What we did in that regard, and if I may share my screen, if that's possible or permissible, and I apologize, I just realized I didn't have my video on. Let me see if I can do this successfully. Share. Okay, can you confirm that you see a table called Table 3 revised? Oh, now I can't hear anything. Why is that?
Yeah, we, I think we were just, yes, Mr. Canning, we've got it. At least I can see it.
I've got it. He's got it.
Super, thank you. So Table 3 was in our original traffic report. It was the site distance analysis table. And we revised this table to reflect the higher 85th percentile speed in the northbound direction. So if you look at the table, under the second, the second column for the right, where it says looking right, 600 feet, that was previously 575 feet, so now it's 600 feet. And 710 feet will be provided when the brush on the side of the road, on the east side of the road, south of the site is cleared, and I'll discuss that in a moment. And if you look three, four cells below, 480 feet traveling northbound, that was 455 feet. And again, the site distance that will be provided is 710 feet. One of the questions that I believe it was the chairman had was, what is the existing site distance out there today? So we went out and we measured and we found that it's 540 feet today. But there are a couple of small bushes, and if they're removed, we can provide 710 feet. We did have Mr. Watson revise his plans and submit them to the board with the notations and areas that were requested by Mr. Gaynor to indicate the removal of these shrubs on the east side of the road, as well as the removal of the twin trunked tree on the west side of the road and the designated area that was to be kept clear of vegetation that was higher than, I think it's 32 inches, and lower than 72 inches. It's on the plan. Basically, a window that you want to make sure that it can be, you can keep it lower or you can keep it higher, but you've got to keep that window open for vehicles to see. It is the obligation of, I believe it's the state, because it's a state highway, to make sure that the edge of the roadway throughout the town is preserved so that you can have the required site distances. Let me, number three, I talked about the, these site distance, existing site distance. The chair, I think it was the chairman also asked, what would happen if the number of trucks that we were projecting to visit the site were to double, were to be twice as high as what we had forecast? So we did a technical intersection capacity analysis. Basically, what we did is we took the estimated traffic volumes on US Route 9, put them into a software that analyzes the traffic signal, put the project traffic turning left and right into and out of the driveway at the site driveway, including one truck turning left in, one truck turning left out, one truck turning right in and one truck turning right out. And we conducted an analysis of it for both the AM and the PM. If I'm successful in changing the screen here, there's the results. So on the left side of this table, we have the analysis with two trucks coming in and two trucks going out. And it indicates that the going out of the driveway, which is eastbound, left and right, with two trucks, the average delay in the AM is 28 seconds per vehicle. So for every vehicle goes out there, it has to wait on average 28 seconds, somewhere a little more, somewhere a little less. That's, that's rated a D on the level of service scale, with A being the best and F being the worst, and D is generally considered acceptable for driveways. During the PM peak hour, the average delay is slightly more with two trucks. It's 30.6 seconds. It's still a level of service D. The northbound left turn for vehicles turning in, on average, a vehicle turning in will have to wait about 10 seconds in the, in the morning and 9.5 seconds in the evening. The reason that it's substantially better is because vehicles turning left into the site only have to deal with southbound traffic. They don't have to compete with both northbound and southbound traffic. And not only do you have half the traffic to deal with, it's actually easier when you're just watching one group of cars to decide, okay, now I can go, rather than when you're looking left and looking right, it takes more time and longer. So that's with the two trucks. If the two trucks were doubled to four trucks, then you can see on the right side, the delays are practically the same. 28 seconds increases to 29 seconds, so it's a one-second increase. 10.3 increases to 10.8. 30.6 increases to 31.6 and 9.5 increases to 9.8. I think it was Ms. Wessel, I apologize, I don't see all the faces on the, on the screen, and I don't recall all the names, asked, Wendell, this Wendell, asked if we had been out and observed traffic operating conditions at the roadways, at the intersections in the area, in particular at First Street. And she was somewhat concerned that some of the motorists on, on the roadway in that area don't follow all the rules. So we did go out and do an observation of the morning peak hour at First Street. We noted that there were a total of eight vehicles that either entered or exited in the peak hour, which is quite a low number. We actually did notice that one person came southbound on US Route 9, and there was no traffic on the roadway at the time, and they turned left into First Street and immediately turned right out, basically doing a U-turn using First Street. But we feel that this wasn't an unsafe maneuver because there was nobody on the road at the time, and the level of activity at that, at that intersection is very modest. Let me see what else I have. Mr. Gaynor had requested that we clarify some of the information in our previous report. So we went back to that and we put in some colored references between the figures at the back and the tables up the front. And we hope that that has helped people to, to understand it better.
And I. Sir, I'm going to, sir, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, just because this is not, this is not a public comment you're making. You're obviously hired by the applicant.
Yes.
And I, and I know you're, 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 now, now you're referring to materials. So can we just confirm maybe, Kelly or Ron, when was this material submitted to the planning board?
Yeah, I believe I, I made contact with Glenn Watson. It was either Tuesday or, or yesterday, trying to understand if any revisions had been performed of the traffic study, recognizing the questions that were raised at the prior meeting. Glenn, at some point, provided me with a link, and then I subsequently transmitted that to the entire board.
Okay, and that was, I believe, yesterday. So, so Mr. Canning, and no, no slight to you, sir, but we are a group of volunteers. So the, there is, there was no opportunity. Certainly, I have a relatively crazy job.
Yep.
I work 80 hours a week for the thing that pays for my house and my taxes. So I don't have, did not have time in the last 24 hours to read said materials, and I don't want to, it's not a quiz for my colleagues, but I suspect less than the majority of us read it. And I'm not going to call on you. My, my concern is we have not had a chance to read this material. Your presentation is, while very thoughtful and helpful, we, we do not have and not had a chance to digest it. And certainly, the public would not have a chance to digest it as well. So I'm happy if you want to continue to provide us any more commentary, but at this point, is it, for us, it's superficial commentary and/or navigation to the material that I'm not even sure everyone's even found yet, given that our package come out at least a week ago. And we do, many of us use the previous weekend to do our, you know, voluntary homework.
I totally understand, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I would have got it in sooner.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not critiquing, I'm just stating, saying a chronological fact.
Sure. I would just finish by saying, one of the other questions you had was the 95th and 90th percentile, and that information is in the package as well, so when you get a chance to review it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Kelly, do we have any members of the public who have to, want to comment? Because I see an enormous number of participants, and I would have assumed that some of them are here for the public hearing.
Nobody has their hand up to speak.
Okay, well, if anyone can hear me, who is a member of the public, if you'd like to speak on behalf of the CRS topic, or not on behalf, but about the CRS topic, you're more than welcome to raise your hand this moment.
Nobody, no.
Okay, all right. So, so at this point, unless Glenn, you have any comments to make for the public hearing at this moment? Do you, Glenn?
Yes. We're sorry that, I'm just going to comment on Mr. Canning's. Having taken the time to do the corrections, right, we really wanted to get it before the public, in the hopes of getting the public. The public hearing closed after, after two meetings, and, and that was really the purpose. We wanted to have it on there. We also, I think Mr. Pooter is here, at least, I haven't, I haven't seen a list on the thing. We've, we've addressed two major comments. By enhancing the landscape plan, which was, and, and there's been some interaction with some of the neighbors. And we've increased the, you know, the screening and, and the protections that we'll offer to get this job done. Basic plan has not changed since the last time, but the screening has. There was some study done to try, particularly the land to the, to the, to the west. So we've been, we intensified the, the screening and I think that those are the two major, major issues.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Kelly, I see that Mr. Pooter has raised his hand, if you wouldn't mind allowing him to join.
Yes. Mr. Pooter, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you for having us this evening. Eric, the owner, was actually able to have a conversation with the neighbor to the rear, and we did put together a preliminary revision to the planting plan, increasing the buffer plantings on that western section of the site. And I don't know that he has heard back from them one way or the other about their sense of that, but I, if you want, I'm happy to share a screen and I can show you that image. And you can see where we're thinking of adding, we're putting about another, another two dozen. There we go. How do I share the image, though?
On the bottom, there's a share screen, in the middle, bottom right.
There are the green button. There we go. All right. This is taking a little longer. There we go. I can't do that, unfortunately. It's not going to, it's not, I have to reboot the system here to share.
How extensive are these changes as far as it goes?
So the changes are basically the, on the, sort of the back corner of the site, where we had a few dozen plants, we're adding another two dozen pine trees back there. So it's going to be a, we had a mix of pine and birch back there to start that were right above the wall. And now we're going to add another two clusters of pine. So you really, and we'll, and we'll resubmit a, we'll resubmit a, the three-dimensional, the sketch-up view of that also. But it really, from that adjacent residence, really exceptionally well buffered with this additional planting, so.
If you want to get the public hearing closed, though, I think it's important to at least share by Zoom any changes that are substantive, at least.
I, I. I shared my screen.
That would be great.
Well, go ahead. Steve, before you start saying what it takes to close the public hearing, let's, let's keep that.
I'm not saying that it will be. I'm just saying if they want to, at a minimum, that needs to be done.
Yeah, well, and maybe, Mr. Pooter, you can just introduce who you are, because I don't think that was clear.
No, I'm sorry, I'm the landscape architect on the project, on the.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay.
But Glenn, if you have that, if you can share that, that drawing I sent you the other day, that would be great. Because it's not letting me share without rebooting. There we go.
You have it?
Yes.
So this is the area. I'm sorry, you, you see it?
I'm sorry, you see it?
What's different about it?
Yes.
Over here on the left side of your screen, is a significant intensity, greater intensity of plantings here.
All of the trees shown in those two bubbled areas are the revised additional plantings.
And what kind of trees are they?
They're white pine.
How tall?
Probably six to eight to start with. So in the sketch-up model, Glenn, do you have the sketch-up model, too? Can you show that?
I do. I'm a little bit at a loss here. I'm going to move that off for just a second.
So, and I know there was a comment about the sketch-up images, the three-dimensional images in the review memo last month about the sizes of them. We didn't show them at six to eight feet, but we didn't show them at mature size either. We showed the pines, you know, 10 to 12-foot size in the image, which is is an eight-foot pine in three years or so is going to be 10 to 12 feet easily. So it's a couple of years down the road to get that degree of screening, but I think when you see this revised one, it's pretty apparent that the
Oh, sorry.
fairly significant change in the screening of the building.
I don't think I can find it, to tell you the truth.
That's the one I sent you. I think I sent you that this morning.
If you're trying to show a stipulation of how tall a tree is, I think we all know six to nine feet, or nine to 12. I think we all can gauge that unless people feel obliged to see a picture of a tree.
I think the massing of it just shows that, you know, it really beefs up the screening there. It's a planting plan to start with, but, you know, the neighbor and Eric have had a dialogue, begun a dialogue about what could be done back there, and he asked me to beef it up, so we did.
The slope in the back of the tract is very steeply sloped.
Yes.
Is that on the embankment? Is that going to actually be shielding their view of the site, or are they low?
We draped the, in the three-dimensional imaging that we did, we actually draped it on the landform and placed the trees on the landform out of the sketch-up model. So it shows the view from that building down to the site.
Thank you.
And that's actually the reason for not, as if I can just add, is that, you know, using, I mean, we love to put in big plans, but, you know, big plans are hard to fit in on a slope. So, because you have a big root ball. So we tend to find that we do a little bit better when we use a slightly smaller size, they're easier to get in, and you have a little more wiggle room if you're trying to place them in on a rocky site, or on a site that's really steep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pooter.
Sure.
All right. So the question for the board, I'll just, I'll reserve my opinion until I ask the question, and I'll take a, if you will, a straw poll. I, whether you had, I'll ask you this. Given the shortness of time to review an important document, which I assume is not only for us as individual board members, but also for the public, I'd like to gauge people's view about whether we keep the public hearing open for one more month to allow people to actually read the study that Mr. Canning dutifully executed and submitted. So I'd like to start with Dennis, your view, Dennis?
I don't mind keeping it open, Neil, but I did have a couple of questions. I actually reviewed some of the material that was sent, but I have no problem.
Dennis, I apologize then. I'm sorry. You should go ahead with your question. I apologize. Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, this would be for the traffic study on the truck maneuvering plan. On pages 64 and 65, they show the truck turning radiuses. And I don't see a legend regarding what the color lines indicate. There's a red and green line. And on those two drawings, they're squeezed together. I'm not quite sure if I understand what that is.
Okay, so the green line is the edge of the vehicle.
Okay, that I assume that based on tracking it down to where the vehicle is shown. But there was no legend shown on the drawing, unless I missed it.
No, there is no legend shown on the drawing.
Okay.
And by the way, the red line is the wheel track, because basically, when you turn a vehicle, particularly the front of it, the wheels are in back of the front.
I understand that. Let me ask you a question, then. At the entry on those two drawings, they're squeezed together. If you look at those two drawings, can you explain what's happening there?
Sure. Am I sharing my screen? Probably not, right?
Yeah, it'd be sheet 164 and 65 on the truck maneuvering plans.
Okay.
Concern is how these trucks are, if they might or might not be crossing the W L line as they're entering and leaving.
Okay, so can you, oh, I'm sorry, I've got to do more to do this. I thought I was doing it right. Just confirm when you can see what I'm showing.
Got it.
Okay, so this is a vehicle coming northbound on Route 9, so obviously it has to cross the W L yellow line to get in, because it's on the right side of the road, so.
That I completely comprehend. Can you bring up the drawing itself, though? And not the analysis? Page, it'd be page 64 and 65 on the document that Ron had forwarded to us.
I think, you know, I'm sorry. Is that right? Is that better?
That would probably be it. I can't see the that is oops.
So this is it says right turn in.
What's happening there?
So you can see the drawing. I'm sorry, because there were two, I have two screens. I didn't know which one you were looking at. So this show
The drawings I'm looking at are on 64 and 65 of the document that Ron sent.
Yeah, so that's, this is 65. This shows a WB67 vehicle coming down. You can see that, I'm not sure if you see my cursor, but there's the dashed line, and you can see it comes right up to the dashed line, but doesn't right, and it turns in. And in the back, basically what happens here is the back wheel and the back edge of the vehicle of the trailer are right on top of each other.
Okay.
See, here's the front overhang, and the front wheel is just slightly inside of that. So that's the southbound right turn.
Okay, that drawing that you're showing is on page 65?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on page 65 on what Ron sent me.
Yeah.
And it indicates a different layout.
Well, let me see. I actually, in preparing for this, I put a couple of sheets up at the top, so it might have put the numbers off by a little bit. This is
This would be turning
Out to the right.
Right turn out.
Yes, that's correct.
And then on 64, it's also a right turn out, going south.
So this is a right turn out going south.
Okay, that, okay.
And again, you can see the double yellow line, if you can follow my cursor, and it goes right up the W L line.
Okay, so where they squeeze together.
Yeah.
F, what's happening there?
So this is the trailing edge of the trailer. So basically, what happens is, to get out, I back it up a little. I come down the front of the building. To get out, I hug the curb, and then when I get to the throat of the driveway, I pull the cab over to the left, make sure nobody's coming, and then to stay within the W L line, I pull the cab around, go draw the cab down along the line, and then I'm trailing the trailer behind me. So this line here, where it's green and there's no red, is the wheels and the side of the trailer is, it trails behind me, and then I sort of straighten out as I go south on Route 9. I would add that Glenn's colleague, Jason Snyder, did coordinate with New York State DOT and worked on this driveway configuration so that it would satisfy
So the DOT is approving this, then?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis, thank you, and I want to apologize for not asking anyone any questions before we go on to the public hearing question. Are there any other questions from the board? Kim, go ahead, please.
So based on what Dennis just said, just asked, you know, so it looks like there's no wiggle room in this driveway at all. Right? Like, you gotta be pretty precise to not go over that yellow.
You're going to be kicking the curb.
The templates that we use are quite conservative, to be quite honest with you. So if this shows this, it'll be fine. And this is pretty much a standard driveway per DOT standards. We've got, I think, a 30-foot opening, and then when you get to the street, it's probably 60 feet.
Okay.
Laura, please, go ahead.
But based upon what you just said, then, but you're assuming that one truck is going, as one truck is leaving, if a truck were to come in, only one truck at a time can work and use that driveway.
That is correct. That is correct. But we're projecting two trucks an hour. So the chances that two trucks are going to come at the same time are very low, and if they do, one truck's going to proceed, and the other truck's going to wait and let it go. It's not going to happen. I'm not going to say it's never going to happen, but the chances of it happening are very low, and when it happens, the guy in the street will let the guy go, and then he'll go. It's as simple as that.
More other questions?
No, good, thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Let me then pose my question to my colleagues. I'll start with Dennis again. Maybe you may have a different view now, or the same. Since we received this material 24 hours ago in a link, and I know I certainly did not digest it, and the public may not have as well, do we think we should close the public hearing or keep it open so we can digest this content for next month? Thoughts?
I'm leaning towards keeping it open. I hate to say that, because I would like to get projects done. Just my nature.
Thank you, Dennis. Neil, I'm going to go in order of your boxes on my screen, Neil.
Yeah, thanks. And I'm going to sort of go with Dennis on that. I I also want to, I understand the applicants wanting to get these things moved through the process, but I only got half halfway through this study. Everything, you know, looks like a lot of good work went into it, but I'd like to have a little more time to read through it. Thanks.
Okay, Kim? Sam? Okay. Laura? Sam, Heidi? Heidi, you're on mute. You've got two mutes. You probably have your phone on mute also. Then you put your computer on mute. All right. Well, we can't hear from Heidi, but I'm guessing she's thinking, she's trying to say, keep it open. Okay, fine. We got a big nod. Peter, I think the vote is clear. Okay, so Steve, do we need to go vote, or do we just keep it open?
Either way, there's a consensus of the board. Just don't close it. It'll remain open, or you can, we make a motion to leave it open till next month.
I see no reason to. We've all had it very clear. We're going to keep this open. Thank you, Mr. Canning, for your report. We will read it with clarity, and Kelly and Kim, Kim being our I don't even use the word webmaster anymore, but making sure it's digitally available would be great, and we will see you next month. Thank you for your patience. Onto the Kepler application.
Thank you.
And our, you're welcome, Mr. Canning, and thank you for the thoughtful report. Look forward to reading it. Mr. Kepler's action is in front of us. I'll start with Ron, who put the the site visit memo together. Ron, do you want to give the highlights of Hamlin from that? Ron, you're on mute.
Thank you. You've got a memo in front of you, which tries to identify the significant issues that we observed. They do lie along a ridge line. However, most of the construction they're proposing in the vicinity of the house and in the rear are in a flat portion of the site. The board's significant concerns related to the vegetation that was proposed along the very severe embankment to the south of the driveway and the residence. After the board left the site visit, the landscape architect identified that his recent submittal had removed all of that proposed vegetation, based on earlier comments he had heard from the board at the August meeting. So they've actually attempted to address the concerns that the board had identified during that sidewalk. They still have significant landscaping proposed, but it's in flatter areas of the site. It would behoove the board to get through the submittal that was made recently. But I think at this point, given the fact that they've responded to the board's concerns by removing that vegetation, that they might be ready to consider this for a public hearing.
Steve, any comments?
I concur with Glenn, or Glenn, with Ron, and I think we are, I mean, it's up to the board, of course, but I think you're ready for public hearing.
All right, questions from the board members beyond what we saw in the on the site visit, which was a lovely Sunday morning? Dennis, please.
Yeah, on the site visit, we did not really look at this, what they're calling a three-season room, or slash on the drawing showing a pool room extension, poolhouse extension. Is there anybody there? Is the landscape architect there, or the owner? It looks like they're extending over the existing deck. I was curious on that approach to that.
That's correct.
Hi, Glenn.
This is Glenn Watson. It is going to be extended to the location of the existing deck.
Okay, so basically, there's a note on it that they're going to restructure or enhance the structure to carry that?
I'm certainly sure that it's going to be structurally sound, yes.
I mean, we didn't get a chance to look at, we were looking at the back. We started talking about the the garage extension, then we walked down the hill looking for the other landscape. My question, I guess pertaining to that, is on the downhill slope side of that, how much disruption or digging is going to be done?
I can tell you that, but not very much at all. I mean, it's just, you're going to take off or rebuild the deck if it needs structural work. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't look at it, so I
It's going to be quite well-contained.
Okay.
If I can speak to that for a minute, the pool room itself exists.
Yeah, right, correct.
Right, what they're doing is extending that. The extension will be placed on piers. So I don't anticipate very significant disturbances to accomplish that foundation work to allow the deck to be extended.
Are the new piers shown, Ron? Because I didn't see anything on that. They just said that they were going to
No, there's some cross-sections on the plants. Might be on the latest
I know they're only development drawings, but
Right. They are illustrated.
Oh, that, okay, I missed that, though. Okay. Thank you. That was really my question regarding that, was for clarity.
Thank you, Dennis. Other questions? Laura, please. Laura, then Kim.
So when we did the walkthrough, we were talking about the ridge line and the amount of plantings that were going to happen along that ridge line and along that slope. Are we going to receive drawings that show the logistical plan of how that's going to happen and what's going to be put into place as that work is being proposed?
David Eaton out there? David, could you chime in on that?
I let him in. David? Hello?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, David. Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, David Eaton, landscape architect. Laura, I think, have you seen the most recent plans where the only vegetation is really proposed on lesser slopes, around 10% and flat areas of the property? All trees and plantings were removed from the steep slopes, as Ron pointed out at the start.
I have it up. I can share my screen.
So basically, I don't think there'll be much kind of anything special required in order to get those plantings in.
But still, even a long But still, even along the, you know, along the drive, you know, that's actually on the other side of the stone wall that's there, you know, you're still impacting that area. So there is some work that needs to happen in order for all of that, for all of those trees to be planted.
There would, there would need to, is post and rail, an existing post and rail fence along that eastern side of the drive. They would take off the rails, and perhaps I can provide a planting detail for how we would propose to plant on, on that slope. But with, you know, the landscape contractor's site spotted all of those trees and doesn't see any issues with it.
Okay. And I also would think that what would be helpful is for us to understand what those plantings are, just so that we understand what the root ball is. You know, if you're talking about something that's like less than a foot or two feet, I completely understand. But if you're talking about something larger, that's a bigger input, that's a bigger impact.
Right. The planting plan series has been submitted in the latest set of drawings with heights and sizes of, caliper sizes of trees and shrubs.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Okay, Kim and Peter.
Let Peter go first.
Okay, Peter.
Hi. When we were doing the site visit, we were walking down the driveway, and there was some considerable erosion that had been in evidence because of the stormwater runoff. And I thought that there was some mention that there was going to be a drainage from the driveway onto the steep slope that was facing, what, to the south, I guess? Is that, is that something that Ron is comfortable with, or is that just something that I'm hallucinating and actually isn't gonna be happening?
We discussed that after, we discussed that after most of you met, when we realized we were looking at the wrong plan. And we are gonna be looking at that, the driveway crossings. We're gonna, we're gonna install at least one or two more, depending on what we find.
Okay. And is Ron conversant with that, or is he comfortable with that type of stormwater runoff down the steep slope?
Yeah, it was an issue that I had identified, either when the board was still there or immediately after you left. But we're just awaiting the submittal of plans that address those drainage concerns.
Okay.
By placing more, they're gonna have less runoff concentrated within those crossing pipes. But they still have to mitigate that discharge on the outlet side of the pipes, so that those details remain to be provided.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Kim?
Okay, so I have some questions, just based on looking at the EAF. And this is actually kind of a question for Steve. But on page 5C, it says, will a proposed action use or create a new demand for water? What's the threshold? Because this is a pretty significant planting. And when trees are new and young, you know, it takes a great deal of water to keep them healthy, especially if you have a year when there's a drought, as there has been this year. So is there a threshold for that?
What they're talking about with water is usually water piped into a house, water used. It isn't usually referring to landscaping. You need an awful, awful lot of trees to be interested in a, to come close to that type of threshold for...
Because if you're using, you know, everybody's on wells, and they're all coming out of the same aquifer. And if, you know, depending upon the depth of somebody's well, you could significantly affect their neighbors. Okay, so that's the first one. And then, on page 11, oh, well, I guess on page 6E, it's another discussion about stormwater runoff. Since it's not more than an acre, I guess it doesn't meet that threshold. For the, will the proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff? So since this is 0.9 acres, it qualifies as a no? Okay. And then, on page 11, I just wanted to ask Glenn. It says, page 11, drainage status of project site soils. It says, well-drained at 100% of the site. I'm just wondering what that criteria is and where that, you know, where that study comes from, because I saw an awful lot of ledge, which usually when it's well-drained soils, it's, we see a lot of gravel, you know, like at the bottoms of the valleys. So I'm just wondering why it qualifies as well.
The source for that is the Department of Agriculture Soil Service, the United States Soil Service Soil Survey. They provide a series of maps that categorize the soils, and they provide charts from which you get the characteristics of those soils. And so we transfer that onto the, onto the property, and then accumulate the various characteristics of the soils that they've identified.
Okay. Okay. And then, the last thing is on page 13. Is F, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? And that's checked, yes. So I'm just wondering what that is. Is that just on the mapper, and you can't find what it is, or?
That's, that's basically what happened there, yes.
Is there any way?
Sure, it's the aqueduct. I assume it's the Catskill Aqueduct, right?
Well, that's several hundred feet away.
The only important thing there, yeah, maybe.
Okay, so that just turns up on the mapper, and it's meaningless to us.
Like, I don't know what it is. I mean, it's right. It turns up on the mapper. It's...
All right. I guess that's it for me for now.
Okay, so you're reserving the right for more questions. And other people?
Neil, can I jump in? I had another question about the...
Yes, please.
FEAF, page 2 of 13. BI Coastal Resources, and maybe this is more of a question for Glenn. Is the project site within a coastal area or the waterfront area of a designated inland waterway? Having struggled with a few EAFs myself, is that, I mean, it's up on Moog Road. It's up, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I don't have the elevations here, but we're looking at something that's 700-plus feet. Does that fall into that? Is that, is that the way you want to answer that question?
You know, I'd have to check. To tell you the truth, I don't remember, I don't remember answering one way or the other in particular. That's made, if you look at the very back page, is that question referred to on the very back page? It has a little map on it. There's a little map on the back page, and it's a chart of different questions that it answers.
Yeah, that did come out of the environmental mapper.
Yeah, it is there.
Okay, right, yeah, it does. Okay, so it came out of the mapper. All right, all right, well. Okay, if they say so. All right, then, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, so I know we've discussed scheduling a public hearing. Are there other steps that we may take at this point, Ron?
Well, I think the referrals have gone out. Kelly?
Yeah.
Have those been issued? Are there any that needed to be sent out? I guess if not, we can make sure that they are addressed prior to the next hearing. I'll have to go through my electronic files to be sure they were done.
Is that a question to Kelly?
I'm sure the board directed that the referrals go out, Ron. I have my notes on that. Whether they're actually sent out or not, it's another matter. But you can double-check on that, and if they need to be sent out, send out. But there's no action for the board to take as far as referrals go.
Yeah.
Right.
So here, all right, so besides the public hearing, so my only concern with the public hearing is we have now two open. We have one that was open and one new one, which is the one that we, Mr. Watson asked for last time to schedule it ahead of time. So we also have Magazzino, which will not be an insignificant spread of time. So I'm, I'm okay to schedule a public hearing for, for Mr. Kepler, knowing that it may get bumped given, given time. I also want to ask Ron and Steve, the number of items that are due out, with the plantings map, and I think another item was mentioned. Do we believe we're gonna have that in time for the submittal, so we can review before the public hearing?
Well, I'll make sure that I get through the recent submittal by the landscape architect. If there's any incomplete data that remains, I'll make sure it gets identified within the next week.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to, I'm happy to go ahead and schedule a public hearing, or at least take a vote on whether we, whether we should schedule a public hearing. But I do want to be mindful that, again, we will have inclusive of three public hearings in the next meeting. I suspect this will not be a massively attended one by the public, given there's... We didn't see any other houses in the distance from our walk, except for the neighbor, but you never know. So can I, we'll discuss it after I ask for a motion. You have a motion, schedule a public hearing for Mr. Kepler's work. All right, second. Thank you, Kim.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Neil. All right. Any discussion about whether we should have a public hearing? I'll just take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we will schedule the public hearing for Mr. Kepler for next month. It will be number three of the public hearings we have, so it may be possible that it does not occur, given reasonable time limitations on these meetings. All right, let's move on to slope line. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Slope line, I think this is bringing to a conclusion. Ron, you want to give us where we are with slope line?
Right. You closed the public hearing at the last meeting. I was directed to prepare negative secret declaration and an approval resolution for the project, and that's now in your hands for consideration.
Okay, can I have a motion for the neg deck on secret?
Don't move.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, okay. And then we have the approval of the lot line adjustment. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the, unless it's going too fast for you, Mr. Gaba? You're on mute, sir.
I thought I was muted. I was, subdivision approval. It's not just lot.
Yeah, no, you looked like, you looked, you looked a little peeked at the speed we were going. I just want to make sure we're okay. So, okay, can I have a, okay, God bless. Well, I don't know if the board's happy, but the board is, no one's quit tonight, so that's good. So a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for the, for slope line, may have a motion, please. Great, Kim, thank you. Second. It's Louis, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Slope line is done. Anything else, Ron, or Steve, any parting words? No? Okay, new business, Mr. and Mrs. Ritchie, Ricky? I don't know who the, I think Glenn Watson is our spokesperson, or is there someone else from the applicant?
I think the applicant is attending this meeting. He may wish to speak.
All right, so we should, we start, we usually start with the applicant, is that correct? It's their, their project? Okay, so I don't know if it's Mr. and Mrs. Ritchie, you're gonna speak, or you're someone on your behalf.
Tony, are you there? Tony and Kim?
There you go.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hi.
All right, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Ritchie?
I'm looking. Hi, I'm Tony Ricky. I own the property on 3315 Route 9 in Cold Spring. We've owned it for about 18 years. And about a year ago, we did a little project there, basically a repair to the building and made it look a little bit better. We're almost getting there. Siding has still got to be finished, but we're almost there. In the midst of this whole COVID thing, pandemic thing, a lot has changed in our lives, and we wanted to make it a living space above there for us to move in. So we're proposing a residential, you know, place above our business. I submitted a application for a building permit, and then Mr. Greg Werner said we should go in front of the planning board. So we started that process, and that's where we're at right now. And that's, that's what, that's what my story is.
Okay. Glenn, are you here for that, or do you want to add anything? No, all right. Glenn's just hanging out, watching, having fun. All right. Ron?
Yeah, you've got a technical memorandum from, from my office. As Mr. Ritchie indicates, there's an existing commercial building on the property. He's in the process of renovating the roof, the attic area, and he's now proposing under this application to convert that to an apartment. I've had somewhat extensive discussions with Steve Gaba to confirm how it complies with code. And within the body of the memorandum, I've summarized what, what Steve has, has offered based on a review of the code. But, but it is, it is permitted to have a, an apartment on upper floors of a commercial building in the HT zone. So that's how it's being processed. As we've discussed before, initially at the first presentation of an application before the board, you initially classify the project, given that there's no disturbances beyond the footprint of the existing building. It qualifies as a minor project, and you should qualify it, or classify it as such at this meeting. Relative to the completeness of the application, the application that came in was lacking a short EAF. It actually should be filed just procedurally to make the application complete. So we have to await the filing of that, and then before you can initiate your secret responsibilities. There will be some referrals required. Putnam County Planning is necessary because it lies along Route 9. There's also the Putnam County Department of Health. So obviously, they're adding an apartment to an existing residence adequacy. The existing well and septic systems have to be confirmed. So that has to be established. We've got some technical issues for the, for the applicant or his representatives to deal with. There was question on my part and Steve's part as to whether the existing building location complies with all bulk dimensional regulations. We couldn't establish that clearly, so once the applicant confirms whether it complies or not, if any variances are necessary, you're gonna have to first proceed to the zoning board of appeals to secure those required variances, if any are necessary. And then we had, in my memorandum, I also had various technical issues to resolve on this or on future plans and mills. So just in summary, as I've said initially, you want to classify the project as a minor site plan, and then authorize necessary referrals to go out.
Well, I agree with, with, I'm sorry, I didn't make the step on Ron's line. Did you have more, Ron?
No.
No, okay. I agree with Ron's analysis of the application. However, I disagree with Ron in regard to my advice to the board. Yes, I think since he came in, my classifying it as minor would be appropriate. But in my view, this is an incomplete application. I don't see how you could take any action when you still need an EAF, and you don't know if variances are needed or not. I think there has to be a table submitted by the applicant showing that they either comply or don't comply with setbacks. Because if they do need variances, probably what you're gonna do before you make any referrals is send them to the ZBA, see if they can get the variances they need. If they can't get the variances, they have nowhere to go with the site plan. So I mean, I'm not saying you can't do what Ron's suggesting. If you want to hit the ground running and make those referrals, that's certainly permissible. I would just, you know, classify it as minor and tell the applicant to come back next month with, with a complete application.
Any questions, board members, on what Ron has got to ask?
I'm just curious, unless I'm missing something here, what triggered coming to the planning board and not just getting a permit?
and not just getting a permit and then going through if, if he needed variances?
He wants, he wants an apartment on the second floor that mandates site plan review.
I see, okay, thank you.
Imagine use.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I have one, Neil, mostly for Ron. You can see in the cross section, there's a, the bumping out the dormers. Ron, how does that work again? You need an average height, don't you need, I forget how it works. You need an average height in the entire span. Do they have that here, does it look like?
No, I haven't analyzed it, but the, I think the requirement, it's, the height of the building is far below that permitted by code.
I mean, the interior, the, the interior of the space needs to have an average height of, I forget what it is, but something like seven feet.
Oh, right, right, in order to be deemed habitable, that's correct.
Right. I mean, I just, I'm looking at this, just, let's just keep an eye on that, make sure they've got it. I'd hate to see them start doing whatever they're doing and then have Greg, have Greg come up there with a ruler and say you don't have the adequate, you know, headroom, so.
Yeah, he'll, he'll pick that.
I mean, that's more of a note for the Rickys, I guess, maybe to just keep, let's just make sure you have that before we move forward.
Right, the planning board doesn't really, doesn't typically look at building interiors. That's something that's typically done by the building inspector during the building permit review.
I know, just trying to, just trying to.
It's a, it's a good comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the exterior of the building? All right, none? All right, well, it sounds like we can go ahead and classify as a minor. And I think, I think counsel's advice is a good one. I, I don't mind making referrals at this point. Although I'll, I'll let the, the group decide, but I don't want to take any other actions at this point, waiting for an EAF, given that's relatively important piece of information for us. Kim, you seem quizzical, anything?
I just, I do actually have one question, which is, may not be the question for the right this minute, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The mobile home that's already on the property, like what, what that is? Does somebody live there?
Yes, yes, rented out with a gentleman that lives there with his wife and family.
So Ron and Steve, does that affect, you know, that, that, that would have a zoning issue, right? How many residents, are there a limited number of residences you can have on a highway commercial property or?
I was unaware that they had somebody living in the mobile home. So you have, you're keeping that as a permanent dwelling on the property, sir?
At this point, we're planning on it, but, yes.
Okay, I think two family dwellings are allowed in the zone. It might just be something to factor into site plan. I'll take a look at the code and let you know if that has any implication. Ron, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I'd have to do the same research, right.
Okay, well, we'll look into it for next month. That's a good catch, though, Kim.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and, I think even with, with the mobile home, I may actually pull back the notion of referrals, given that they may have input, have implications for the Department of Health. Let's, let's go ahead and classify the project as minor, please, can I have a motion, please, to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kim, second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, approved, abstentions, okay. Referrals, how are people feeling? I'd like to not do the referral at this point, given that I think the addition of the dwelling seems like that's another strike about progress. So I'm going to defer to that topic unless someone feels strongly against that or for that. Okay, all right, well, I think, Mr. Ricky, I think you have clarity about your next steps?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so then I can, all right, thank you. I did have a minor topic to raise with the board. I'm sure everyone likes to have additional things to do, so let me just raise this before I forget. Two things, one, Steve, I get a number of questions. Maybe you can remind everyone on the board and then members of the public who may be listening, what are the procedures about us having meetings in person versus Zoom? And particularly tied to the public hearings topic?
Right, there currently is no prohibition on holding meetings in person, except that you're limited to no more than 50 people in attendance at one time. However, if you hold a public hearing, then you must make the attendance at the public hearing available to the public remotely. This means that you can either, one, hold your meeting remotely and everything is satisfied. Or two, if you're really, you know, insistent upon meeting in person, you could hold a meeting in person, but you have to simultaneously have a remote meeting. In other words, people have to be able to come in via Zoom or Skype or whatever it is to, to hear what's going on at, at the meeting. And those are pretty much the regulations right now. On unusual circumstances where you have a public hearing, where you might wind up with more than 50 people in the room, I've seen municipalities resort to things like scheduling people to come in in shifts, you know? To wait out in the parking lot and then, then, you know, you come in when your, when your turn arises. Or holding it open, just to make sure that everybody gets a chance repeatedly. Certainly the easiest thing to do and probably the most complete is to continue your Zoom meetings, but there are other options out there if that's what the board is interested in.
I just wanted people to hear that. So when we get ques, when we get questions about this, this is why we're in this format. If we had a night without public hearings, I'd be perfectly happy to have in-person meeting along the guidelines that Steve outlined. But this is why we're doing this format, because as you know, we had at least one and had at least one public hearing since June. Any questions on that topic? Okay, second topic I have is a gentleman from Climate Smart Phillips Town has approached an offering of training. And we have a annual training requirement. We'll discuss how well we've all satisfied that training requirement. I'm not keeping records. Well, Kim has something to say, go ahead, Kim.
Some of us have done our training.
I don't know, I'm not keeping records, I said.
Not in any shade.
I don't know, not sure what that means, but okay. So, so we've been offered to have a training from a group in town called Climate Smart Phillips Town about something called Complete Streets. It's an hour and a half training towards our four-hour annual requirement. I know we're fairly busy. I wanted to gauge the sentiment of the group as that, as that's something they want to have done and we would do it outside of our usual meeting. We'd schedule a, dare I say, an additional meeting some week for the hour and a half training. It would be done via Zoom like this. I guess it could be done in person, it's not a public hearing. But I wanted to gauge the sentiment of the group if they want to go and schedule something like that between, somewhere between October and December. You can simply do a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a thumbs middle, if you don't know what the hell I'm talking about. It is a training about a new form of bicycle accessibility in communities. It sounded interesting, I was approached by this group and it's certainly a part of our training. So a, a thumbs up from Kim, other thoughts?
I'd be interested.
Okay, that's a majority, good. All right, well, we will try, well, we will, we will get it in schedule. I'll offline, I'll find some dates and we'll, we'll futz around with that, but that's not a, yes, go ahead, Kim, please.
So this is a, I don't know if you know about Climate Smart Phillips Town, but it's a town board sanctioned group. So it's actually kind of part of our town government in a way. It's a committee, I believe, I've got that wrong. But I think Roberto wanted to also schedule it with the zoning board and maybe the conservation board. Like it was an idea that all the boards would join in, so it's not just us, just so you know.
Offer it to all the boards and have it done in one shot and then do it via Zoom.
So Bob, how would we coordinate that?
I'll, I'll handle that, I'll coordinate with Bob D. and what's his name who runs Conservation? We'll get a date, I'll just use something called email and we'll, we'll find a date, submit, see what people can do. People will prefer Thursday night or the same time or a weekend? Can I hear Thursday night?
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Thursday.
All right, fine, so we'll shoot for Thursday, same time, just a different, not the third week, all right? All right, can I have any other, any new business besides that? Okay, motion to close the meeting, adjourned?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second, thank you, Peter. All right, all in favor, aye, have a good night, God bless America.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.